But he goes home. They don't come to see us, they come for the cookies. That's okay. All right, so we are going to move on to the next item, which is Department and City Manager Reports. Mr. Olson.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. So the first report tonight, Darrell, do you need to come up again? You're gonna talk about the incident, but I think we've-
Pretty much early.
Okay, thanks Darrell. Heather.
Well, mine's pretty exciting. It's about the budget meeting on Thursday at 5:30. Remind everybody to get your questions in and we'll... You know, okay, Eddie, you look like you didn't know for a minute. I was worried. We're having a budget meeting this Thursday at 5:30. It's gonna be incredibly exciting. So, get all your questions in, Nathan, so we'll have all the answers prepared. If not, we'll answer them on the fly. So, see you Thursday.
Thank you. Frank?
Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. What I have tonight to report on is the progress of the repair of our city's streetlights. As you know, repair and maintenance is an ongoing task, so each day, we may fix one and one may go out. So, a few weeks ago, Moore PV aided staff by providing a list of streetlights that identified lights that were not working while patrolling our streets at night. I want to thank them for taking time out of their busy night to identify them, being proactive and ensuring that our streetlights are re-illuminated as quickly as possible. The city maintains approximately nineteen hundred and fifty streetlights. The list we received was fairly large, but within a few days, Jason and Ray Greenley's guys had all but a few lights not functioning. So, a big shout out to all staff for working together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, I think that's it, other than myself. So, what I have, a couple of things for me. And one, I'd like to, I'm happy to report out that our SB 1 funds were submitted by Linda Byersdorf, our management analyst, and our list has been approved. So, it looks like we're part of the SB 1, we're looking for about $150,000 in 2017, '18. That goes to street maintenance. And then, we're in the queue for 2018, '19 to receive an additional approximately $438,000 for street repairs next year. So, got that in, that's great. The other good news is we just signed our submittal for more of the CDVG grant money that was tied in with the senior center. So, we should be getting another reimbursement of $700,000 minimum. It's a little bit more, I don't know the exact amount. But, getting that project to completion, so getting all the funds back into the city. So, thanks Linda for efforts there, I appreciate it. And then, lastly, I'll be heading out Saturday evening to Las Vegas to attend the ICSC conference. So, you'll have a little booklet in front of you, a little four-pager. This is kind of the handout we're gonna use. It'll be on a sheen paper, so that's just for display purposes tonight, but we're getting the right paper in. We also have little City of Lamoore logo, they almost look like little credit cards that are USBs that'll have information with this, as well as our rec guide, the chambers, Chamber of Commerce information on it. West Hills College has a nice pamphlet, so we'll be handing those out down at ICSC as well. And Amanda is working on a list. There's some targeted vendors we're going after. We have four pages of businesses and restaurants that are looking to expand in the California area. So, we're trying to match those with our demographic, and we're going through and identifying who we meet, who we don't. And then, Mr. Chuck Jolloyan from Chris Combs is gonna be there. My first time down there, he said he's gonna look me up and show me the ropes. So, I'm looking forward to it, and I just want to thank staff for all the efforts getting prepared for this. So, that's it, thank you.
Excuse me, if I may. Is that the same one I went to like two years ago?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we will now move on to our consent calendar. We have five items on consent calendar. Council, is there any items that you would like to pull for further discussion?
Yes, I'd like to pull item 3-4, please.
Okay, so item 3-4 will be pulled for further discussion. Anything else? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar as written except for item 3-4?
Make a motion to approve consent calendar minus 3-4 as written.
I'll second it.
All right, so there's a motion by Mr. Brown and a second by Mr. Chedister. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Chedister?
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Consent calendar is passed except for 3-4, so we'll go ahead and pull 3-4 for discussion. Who's gonna present that one?
I'll present this one. Okay, good evening again, Mayor and Councilmembers. So, this is an action alert that came out of the League of California Cities. They're really trying to fight the Tax Fairness Transparency and Accountability Act of 2018. What this act really does is limits the ability, and you lose local control of how you can get taxes. It basically takes everything to a two-thirds majority. It can also take away some of your franchise fees that are tacked on to different utilities that come back to the community that can make a substantial part of your general fund. Those can be overshadowed by these taxes, you could lose that revenue. And there's also some retroactive, it won't affect Lamoore because we haven't passed anything in 2018, but for cities in California that have passed any kind of a measure that didn't have a two-thirds vote, it would actually go back and reverse that, and they'd have to reimburse those dollars. So, this is, the league's asking cities to oppose this. I sent the draft over for council to review, so.
Okay. Are there any questions?
The one thing I guess I should point out is this is really being fought hard by the Beverage Association PACs. They had some taxes that they were, I don't know the bill, I can't recall off the top of my head, but basically, the beverage industry and the alcohol and soft drink, they had to pay some taxes that have been put through. And they have donated $2.74 million to support this bill. So, it'll basically, it's a backdoor to get out of paying those taxes, or to, yeah. So, that's where we're at, just looking for direction. If you want us to support the league in this endeavor and sign the letter or not.
Is this a sign of letter? Because I'm on the League of Cities. Is it a resolution?
It's a resolution to send in.
Okay.
Yes, sorry.
Okay, no problem.
Any other questions?
No, I just wanted it mentioned.
Any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to council for discussion or vote.
I make a motion to approve item 3-4.
I second.
Okay. So, we have a motion by Ms. Blair and a second by Mr. Neal. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
Mr. Chedister?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The item is passed, thank you. All right, we'll move to Section 4, which are some public hearings. We actually have four separate public hearings that we're going to discuss today. I've been asked to take them out of order. 4-3 is going to be heard last. And we'll do 4-1, 4-2, and 4-4 first. So, item 4-1 is Resolution 2018-21, Track 921, ordering annexation and inclusion of an additional territory, a Zone 8 of Public Facilities Maintenance District Number 1, and confirming the diagram and assessment of annual levy for fiscal year 2018, '19 for Public Facilities Maintenance District Number 1. So, Mr. Rivera?
Actually-
Nope, you don't look like Mr. Rivera.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Linda Byersdorf, the management analyst, and I'm gonna kind of be walking us through these four public hearings tonight.
Thank you.
I have a map over there, since we have four different items, just to make sure people are clear as to which area we're talking about. And Track 921 is this one right over here. So, it's over near the old Ethel Red's, and it's a brand-new subdivision. It's being built by Woodside Homes. It will have sixty-four new residential lots once construction is complete. The annual maximum assessment will be $700 per parcel for an anticipated budget of $44,800. Now, this is a PFMD, which is a Public Facilities Maintenance District, and that means it also includes street paving and streetlights, which is why it's a little more expensive for an annual rate. It also has an annual inflationary adjustment, and the annual increase in the maximum annual assessment shall be in accordance with the annual percentage increase from March to March in the Employment Cost Index for total compensation for state and local government workers published by the U.S. Bureau of Labor and Statistics. And what I show is the last two years, that was about 2.37%, and in 2015, it was about 2% that had increased. And when it increases, it's increasing the maximum assessment, but that does not mean that that is what a parcel will be assessed. The Engineers' Report uses separate numbers, and they will calculate the amount that is due. So, even though their maximum assessment is $700, we may only assess them $650. It depends on what we need for the budget for that year. So, does anybody have any questions?
Okay, the PFMD, is it better, it benefits the city better? How does that work?
Well, it benefits the city better in that the budget of the PFMD would pay for their street paving, so the city wouldn't pay for that, and any of their streetlights, it comes out of the PFMD budget.
Okay, helps us out, okay. Thank you.
I just had a quick follow-up question about your inflator. So, let's say you don't actually use the full 2%, let's say you only go increase by 1.5%. And the following year, the inflator, does it start at that 1.5 mark to then go up to 2% again? Or would it start a whole new bracket again?
Actually, what probably would happen is the maximum assessment would increase the maximum percent. So, if it's 2.37%, the maximum assessment would increase to that. But whatever the amount is that council approves, may not increase at all, it may go down, it may go up 1%. But then, the next year, let's say it's 2.37%, the maximum assessment will go up again, adding that 2.37%, but we may not increase what is due. So, the maximum will always increase the maximum percentage.
But the starting point from the year prior, is the starting point from-
It'll be what the maximum assessment is for the year. So, like, right now, it's $700, so that will increase whatever that percentage is next year.
But it's dropping down, you said six?
It could, what they're paying could go down, but the maximum that they could be assessed will go up. There's kind of two numbers that are in the report.
Okay.
Can I ask a follow-up for clarity, just because I still am a little confused. I just want to make sure I understand.
Yes, it's confusing.
So, if in one year, let's say the inflator is 2.3%, but we only increased by 2% because for cost, we didn't need 2.3%. The following year, again, the increase is going to be 2.3 again, just for sake of argument. Only this time, we need the 2.3%. The starting point of the second year, are we starting at the previous year's increase of 2%? Or the increase of the maximum threshold, which was 2.3 to start with?
The increase of the maximum threshold will be the maximum-
So, even though it wasn't assessed at that 2.3, it was maybe assessed at 2, the following year, when it goes up, it would go up from the 2.3?
The maximum assessment.
Okay, yes. Just, thank you.
Okay, so I have a question that might be maybe for Mr. McGuire, who's here representing Will Dan, the engineering firm that did the report. So, just for the public's information, we pull out a number of $700 per parcel per year. I would just like, if you could explain in a little bit more detail as how you derive or arrive at that figure, because I want the public to know that this is not something that we just do willy-nilly at all. When you read these reports, they're very, very specific, and the way, the formulas that you use are very specific, and I think that it comes up to a number that's very relevant and something that we, obviously, we're not wasting any money at all. We're not asking for too much money. It's just what we need to maintain a certain level of service.
Right. Actually, the budget numbers that generate the point to what we calculate the annual assessment to be is based on current maintenance costs. What it costs us to maintain a certain type of landscaping, what it's costing to maintain the streetlights, what it would cost to do annual repairs to the roads. That's all budgeted in. A lot of the cost, if you look at the Engineers' Report, like for maintenance of the roads, there's very little in terms of the cost of annual maintenance. Most of the money is going to long-term repairs when we have to slurry seal and when we have to do overlays. So, that money's being set aside for something that we're accumulating a little bit each year to do a major project five years out or 10 years out. So, the budget's all geared to that, and it's all based on the square footage of the landscaping, the number of streetlights, the amount of street pavement that has to be repaired. And that, you come up with a total cost of doing that within the district. You divide that by the benefit units of all the parcels to come up with the assessment rate. And so, what the actual cost that's calculated is slightly less than what we're balloting. We round the number up to the nearest even dollar for balloting purposes, so we start with a nice even number to start with. And then, going back to your question in terms of how those things are done, the maximum assessment that's allowed each fiscal year is calculated totally independent of whatever you budget. So, the maximum rate now is $700. Next year, it'll go up by the inflation. That number will go up by the inflation the following year, and it'll just continue to go. The reason behind that, even though you may levy less, water bills. They don't go a little bit at a time. They go nothing and then spike, and nothing and then spike. So, what you're doing by allowing the maximum to go up, you may not levy, you may levy the same assessment for five or six years, and all of a sudden, the water costs jump. Well, now, you can go anywhere up to the maximum that you're allowed to at that point in time. So, that's the reason they're built that way.
Okay, and I totally understand that, and thank you for that added clarification. Then, the follow-up question that I have for that is just, and this probably goes back to our council, what policies might we have to add to transparency for how that would, that money would be set aside and be used later on? Because I think that the biggest fear is, from my understanding, let's say, it's gonna go up $250, but we only levy 200 of that 250 because that's all we need that year. But we still are setting aside the ability to go up. Then, following year, we start at 250, and we might levy 275 the following year, because that was our starting point. And we're saying that that's because, you know, we might be saving up for a rainy day. I totally understand that. A community member then, of course, is going to ask, well, how do I know that that's what it's being used for? How do I know that my money's being set aside for something? So, I'm asking, what do, what policy, what do we have in place to be able to show that back to our community? These are the projects that it was later used on, or what we're anticipating being used on, so that we have clarity for our community when these taxes are being raised again.
Well, actually, you're restricted by law. The money can only be used in that zone. The money collected in that zone can only be used in that zone. The money set aside is being accumulated, and it'll show it at the bottom of the, it shows it in the bottom of the budget, a reserve fund. All that money that's collected each year for capital, for, you know, rehabilitation replacements, as well as operational reserves, goes into that fund. At some point down the road, when we start accumulating enough money to actually do something, the Engineers' Report that fiscal year will show an actual capital expenditure for what that's going to be used for.
Thank you.
So, I have a question about that.
Yes, sir.
So, this also includes parks that are in that zone?
Yes.
So, they have slides, they have playgrounds and things like that. What if, at some point, someone comes to me and says, why don't we put another slide in above and beyond what's already there? Are we allowed to do that, or can we only maintain the slides that are original? That's just an example.
The money could be used for installing new equipment. However, obviously, the installation of new equipment, the budget is designed to maintain and replace existing equipment, and if additional equipment goes in, those costs go up. So, over a period of time, we would have to evaluate, is there enough funding being collected? Or can we afford to actually put in that equipment and continue to maintain it? And that decision would then come back to council. If we say, no, you really don't have the money to do that, then it becomes your dollar if you want to do it. But, if the budget can allow for it, it's part of the improvements that are authorized under the 72 Act. So, yes, you could install new equipment for a park facility if you wanted to.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure that, yeah, the funds that come in, each LLMD and PFMD have a separate fund. So, you know how we have a general fund, water fund, sewer fund, et cetera? They go into their own little funds, so that's how we can see it. So, even if the Engineer Report comes out and says, we need to spend $300,000 on new slides, for example, you can go into the general ledger, I can print off the general ledger, anybody, any citizen can request the general ledger, and you can see how much was spent, on what day, and where it came from in that, because they're all separated in their own funds.
Thank you.
And additionally, I've also asked staff to have an LLMD section on our new webpage, where people can go in and click in their zone and see the budget clearly without, just to make, because it's out there. We're gonna make that available online. I've been telling residents we would do that.
Okay, that was gonna be my suggestion, because something like this, maybe like where it's condensed, are we gonna like maybe offer like a condensed version of the, what services are being provided in each of those zones? So, because if you just put the budget in there, obviously, that's gonna be confusing for a lot of people. Are we going to put bullet points for the community to see?
I guess we can, yeah, I'll let staff develop it the best way, because one of my requirements was that the average individual has to be able to understand it. So, I want it, you know, sometimes if you just look at the ledger, it doesn't mean a lot to some people, but no, we're gonna break it down to where people will-
That's right.
I mean, we understand letters because we know what we're looking at.
Right, that's why I was asking, just for clarification, so our community. And the last point I might add to the Mayor's point, that was a great idea, as far as somebody might ask to want an improvement, perhaps we might add a section for comments or suggestions that the community might offer what they like to see the funds used for. So, I'd like to make that suggestion.
Any other questions? Okay, so this-
You have someone back there?
Okay, so this is a public hearing, so at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone that wishes to come forward and comment on this agenda item, please do so now.
This is just Track 921.
Yep, just 4.1, this particular specific area that we're talking about.
No.
No, please come forward. Is this about? Say it again?
Which? Which zone, sir? Which zone are you in?
I'm in Zone 4, I believe, over by Heritage Park, but I wanted to touch on the equipment at the parks. Is that okay? Because you guys were talking about if they wanted to put another slide or something in?
That's fine, yes, go ahead, sir.
Is that, like, say you have the slides and swings and stuff, is that stuff insured? Or is it just like, if somebody comes in and damages it, the owners there have to pay for a new, out of the funds?
The city pays for it. Oh, yeah, yeah, that's city property, no resident would be required to repair that.
The people there are paying for that, correct?
Yes.
But the city is insuring it? So, or is it, like, say, because it caught on fire at Wazza Castanos, did the city pay for that? Or did it come out of the funds that the people are paying?
It would be, any repairs that would be, were self-insured. But any repairs that would have to be made of that sort would come out of that particular fund.
Because it's open, that property is open to the public. The public can go in there, they go.
Yes.
Because they caught fire over there at Wazza Castanos, like I said.
Okay.
And so, it's coming out of the money, so in the next year, is the assessment gonna go to the max? Or do you guys assess it off of that?
No, so how the assessment works every year is we have to hire an engineer, and every year, they have to run another Engineers' Report, and it's all based on the square footage, the shrubs, the grass, the amount of stuff. So, the only thing we might, if we knew we wanted to add like a concrete wall at some point, we could say, hey, we want to set aside $2,000 a year for this future improvement. We could actually build that in, but like a one-off, something breaks, somebody goes in there and just vandalizes it, that should not affect your rate whatsoever.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that wishes to comment during the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Bring it back to council. Any discussion?
We need to count the vote.
Before we vote?
Yeah, before you close?
Okay, so before we vote on this, we need to, we need to count the votes that have been submitted for this particular tract. So, Madam Clerk, can you please let us know what the results of that was?
Jim's gonna have to read it. It's independent. Sorry, oh, Janie? Jim needs to give the result, it has to be the independent consultant.
Well, Senator Cook could do it, yes.
She wants you to do it.
We'll make it simple. There was one ballot cast, because there's one property owner. It's $44,800 yes, $0 no. This one passes.
All right. So, just for clarification, there's only one property owner because the developer owns this property. There's no parcels that have been sold or anything like that. That's why there's only one vote in this one.
So, yeah, because there's no majority protest, council now has the ability to adopt the resolution if they so wish.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve item 4-1 and approve Resolution 2018-21 as proposed.
There's a motion by Mr. Chedister, and a second by Mr. Neal. Mr. Chedister?
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Resolution is passed, thank you. So, we will now move on to item 4-2, Resolution 2018-22, Track 797, ordering annexation and inclusion of an additional territory in Zone 4 of Public Facilities Maintenance District Number 1, and confirming the diagram and assessment of annual levy for fiscal year 2019 for Public Facilities Maintenance District Number 1. Ms. Byersdorf?
This one is right over here. It's right next to Heritage Park. It's south of East Hamford-Armona Road and west of Opal. This, again, is a PFMD, so that means it includes street paving and streetlights. This subdivision had only a couple houses built in it, and now D.R. Horton has taken it over. Phase 1 was already, is already in the PFMD, is Zone 4. Now, we're annexing in Phase 2. So, Frank can show you, Phase 1 is the blue section, Phase 2 is the lower section. So, since we're including a new section, that means there's additional streets and landscaping that needs to be included in streetlights. So, you can kind of see, if you want to just point out the streets and the streetlights there, that all has to be added into the zone for the budget. So, the, so currently, there's 39 single-family residential parcels. Phase 2 will add 51 additional parcels for a total of 90 parcels when it's complete. The current assessment for the Phase 1, Zone 4, is $564.90 a year. And then, we're proposing to increase it to $655 a year to include the new streets and streetlights. Again, it would have the annual inflationary adjustment, which would be based on the Employment Cost Index for total compensation for the state and local government workers. And that, again, is independent of what the actual assessment might be. That's just the maximum assessment. And the assessment would begin for fiscal year 2018, 2019.
Questions from council?
What was Phase 1? Phase 2 was 51. What was Phase 2?
Phase 1 was 39.
39, okay.
And that's the piece to the north, right?
That's the 39, and then down below is the 51.
51, okay. And this goes on 2018, 2019?
Yes, next year.
And this one will have more than one vote because there was an existing parcel owner.
Yes, there were a few homeowners in the Phase 1. But I believe there might have been some houses that were sold after the ballots were sent out, so they wouldn't have had a ballot.
All right, any other questions? If not, I'll open the public hearing again. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this matter?
Logan. With the other 51 owners, how come we don't wait until they get moved in to do the ballots? How come we, so, why does the builder get to do the vote instead of the owners? Because they're gonna move into this new assessment. How come we don't wait?
So, the ballot, so the laws were passed to help cities be able to fund the upkeep of city properties, right? So, as part of development agreements, developers will agree to put in a PFMD or an LLMD in these instances. And when people purchase those homes, it's disclosed that this is in a PFMD, and you'll be assessed this on an annual basis. The reason we do it in the front end, and because the law allows us to do it, is because the city's general fund can't keep up with all these new subdivisions going in all the time. And if you wait till the end, remember, this is a vote, so if it's voted no, then the city- the city would be burdened with the responsibility of everybody's tax money going into a specific area of the town. That, that's why we do that.
Well, we have, we have an assessment already, 564, and we just started this, so why are they raising it?
It'll raise because there's additional, there's additional landscaping to keep track of, there's additional roads...
There's no landscaping. It's in the front, along, there's a small road in front of Harfarmona, it's a bunch of trees, and that's it. There's no other landscaping there.
Mr. McGuire, would you like to respond to that?
Sure, here we go through all the questions, and then I'll respond.
Okay. Okay. Is that it? Okay, good. Is there any other comments? Okay, come forward, please.
Oh. I'm Dallas Jewell, I moved into this northwest corner lot, 1099 Jade Way, right between Christmas and New Year's. When I moved in there, you know, my property taxes went from Oakdale, at Vine and Oakdale, 1,800 a year, and now I'm paying 3,800 a year. Obviously, you know, I've got more square footage, much smaller lot, but, you know, now we're talking about 560 more dollars. There are a series of trees that run north of my property along the block wall, because I'm up on that corner at the frontage road. You know, a lot of trash from the apartment complex right there, shopping carts left there often, not necessarily a city problem, I understand, but the city wouldn't come in and trim those trees. The trees, there's six or seven trees that are overhanging the, the block wall of the lot that I moved into, and D.R. Horton had to pay to have the trees trimmed, and then I had to clean up the mess, because the city wouldn't deal with it. I understand there's, there's some, you know, lawn and, and trees along the park strip that's approximately 15 feet wide that, that parallels the frontage road to Hanford-Armona Road, and, and of course, there's a cost associated to maintain that, and yes, you're talking about asphalt, you're talking about streetlights, but, you know, when you're paying, I don't know who you're paying to do the maintenance, but the guys come over and they blow the leaves, and they just blow them over to the corner of my lot. You know, so I have a real hard time thinking I'm going to pump out 600 more dollars a year, plus, when, when it's not done well to begin with, in my personal opinion. You know, and I don't know, does this, does this include water maintenance? Anything to do with water, some boxes?
On the...
The water valve boxes, water meter boxes?
If it's part of the, if it's part of the landscape that's being maintained by the district, then yes.
So a brand-new meter is put in on a brand-new home, right? You've got a service, you come in, you drop in a meter, you put a box around the meter to protect the meter. The box can't even be set square. So when I get charged a $25 fee to transfer my utility from one home to another, I tell the lady, hey, I'm perfectly fine paying the $25 fee, but hey, send the city guys out to set that box square. You think anybody came out and set it square? I mean, really? The, the water service box is, is cockeyed. Set it square!
Okay. Sir, I'll have our public works director get your name and number, and he will, he will get in touch with you probably tomorrow.
Okay, and so we're not going to wait for anybody else to vote on phase two? I mean, that's, the city has that discretion, is that the way it goes?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, very well, thank you.
I just wanted to make one comment, the increase per year is, is $90.
90 per year?
Yes.
Not 600?
I think he was talking about from when he moved from Oakdale to the place he's in now. That's what he was talking about.
He says 654 or five.
I'm Mindy Jewell, I'm a teacher in this community, I just wanted to address the council and Mayor, Mayor Prutin. Thank you for that opportunity. So the other issue that we have, we canvass the neighborhood. Many of the neighbors have moved in since we moved in, which was in January, the beginning of January. Of the neighborhood residents that we were able to knock on the door and get someone to open the door, which was two streets full, there were only three residents, one including the gentleman that's standing back here, that received the letter, ourselves, this gentleman, and one other family, who could not appear tonight because husband's in the Navy and mom's watching four kids. So it seems like it would be a much more democratic situation to table the matter just until you know the residents that are currently living in the blue zone at least get notification, because they have not. And so they have nothing. One lady took a copy of our letter, photo, you know, like took a photo on her cellphone, and she sent in a letter, I believe to the, to the council tonight, requesting that she, you know, be able to vote and her vote be counted, but she never received the ballot. Most of our neighborhood did not receive a ballot. There's four streets currently that people are living in, and no one received the ballot.
How, how many people are we talking about?
Well, it's all of the blue zone. That's all developed and sold.
How many is that?
I think 39, I believe 39, yeah.
When did the ballots go out?
Okay, so here's another question. The letters go to the property owner, so if they, if they're not the owners themselves, they wouldn't have received them. If they're renting the property, they, that's what I meant, if they're renting the property, they would not have received, and they go to whatever is on the tax rolls as the property owner.
I understand that, but my concern is this, as a resident, I know of one house in that subdivision that the individuals purchased as a rental, just one that I'm aware of. I mean, I didn't go around asking, are you the renter or the homeowner? However, when you're talking about 39 homes and only three families receiving the ballot, whether they're, you know, it just doesn't seem like appropriate notification was received. I know we got our ballot three weeks ago, and I'm not sure my turn to your yours, around three weeks ago.
So what's the timeline, the chronology, as far as when they were sent out? How do we know who they were sent to? Is it sent certified mail? What's the process for that?
I, I do, I do have the list from D.R. Horton that shows what has been sold and what has not been sold, if you're interested in seeing that.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll answer the first gentleman's question in terms of costs.
Good.
As it relates to the costs, we didn't originally form the original zone four, but as part of this process of expanding and annexing to it, we went back and reevaluated the cost for the entire zone, looking at all the improvements, spreading those costs amongst everybody. It was actually, the budget was actually a little less than what it should have been for, for the road maintenance part of it, what was originally established. So that's the bulk of why that assessment has gone from 564 to 655, is largely because the, we weren't budgeting enough for long-term maintenance of the road. So that was, that's, that's the real reason for the cost increase. Has really little to do with the fact that we're adding more property, because they're actually sharing in the landscape maintenance up front now, although they clearly brought some landscaping on themselves for that new development, they're also all sharing in those costs now. And so you're spreading that amongst more units. In terms of the balloting, you're required by law under Prop 218 to mail notices of the public hearing and a ballot 45 days prior to the public hearing. And those are mailed to the property owner of record as of the last equalized rule. Last equalized rule was July of last year. So, however, we take the extra step, and we, we, we actually monitored it in this district as best we could, we get updates from a third-party source called ParcelQuest, which gets county records of changes of ownership. We actually mailed replacement ballots to several new property owners that had gone originally, when we sent out the ballots to the original developer, we sent out some replacement ballots, about four or five, to new property owners that weren't identified before. That's all we can do, is update the best we can with the records that, on the county rolls, and that's available to us for information in terms of mailing. Yes, if property owners are in there, clearly they, the property owners in the area that did get ballots, talked to some of their neighbors, had an opportunity to contact the city clerk and get a ballot if they, if they were the new owners. I mean, we would take anything that gives us viable information of the ownership. But the reality is, we are where we're at. We followed the law in terms of the balloting process, and they were mailed to the property owners that you as the city know as the ownership at the time, when the ballots were mailed, and that's all you're required to do.
And when were they mailed? What's the date? 45 days from before today?
Last week of March.
I'm supposed to April 25th.
Yeah, we have our envelope here for our ballot on Jade Way, and it's, the postmark is April 25th. And we didn't go out and speak with our neighbors until Sunday. So we walked our neighborhood on Sunday, and most of our neighbors had no clue what we were talking about.
So you're saying, I got a question. You're saying April 25th you did receive that? Okay, it's postmarked, I just wanted to make sure. Oh, no, 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 I, I trust you, I trust you.
Should it, you don't have to see it. We issued replacement ballots...
Well, sir, I do have to see, if I ask the question...
No, I mean, I'm, I'm just explaining that we, we reissued replacement, like I said before, we reissued replacement ballots when we saw that there was property ownership updates. We, if they look at their ballot, it actually says replacement ballot at the top.
So...
Because we mailed it to the original owner, which was the developer, and the developer said they don't own the property anymore. We researched it, mailed out to new property owners on April 25th.
So are you a new property owner?
We are, but we are a new property owner in January.
December 29.
Was our, our actually closed, actual closing day. Now, we were approximately the third new home to submit. Since then, many have come after us, and as you transfer your mail through the post office in the morning, it takes a while to catch up with you. So a lot of that mail, still be going to their home and then being transferred because they've done a change of address with a little yellow label. A lot of the homeowners in our subdivision did not receive any notification whatsoever.
And again, that would have been, the ballots were mailed originally 45 days prior to the public hearing, based on the last, on the county equalized rule. That's what we're required to mail ballots on. That equalized rule is July of 2017.
But then, if I may ask a question, you sent out a supplement ballot, is that correct?
Yes, on April 25th.
On April 25th, and the hearing is today. Okay.
But you met your requirement by mailing ballots to the property owners of record as of the equalized rule 45 days when we mailed the first ballot out. The fact that we mail out a second ballot, even today, if someone came up and requested a replacement ballot, I have blank ballots to issue to them, and they can get a new ballot.
Understand that, I just wanted to make sure I was clear in what you did.
Right.
It's not attack on you?
No, no, I'm not, I'm not taking it as attack, I'm trying to explain what happened. So it's a process, and because we, we, we knew, we identified, or the city identified that some property owners had changed, we researched the information that we had online to figure out who might be new owners of those properties, and we remailed to those.
Can I ask a question? Another question is, is, and once you sent out the supplement ballots, is there any requirement by law to, to extend that, that 45-day period?
No, there was not.
Okay, so there's, there's no requirement per se?
No.
Okay.
We already met the requirement.
What was the date of the original ballots going out?
The last week in March. The original ballot, so you received yours, well, it was postmarked on the 25th.
But I received the second ballot, not the first, and I was in the house December 29.
So, but what I'm saying is, you, you, even at the 25th of April, that's 22 days ago, isn't it, or 20 days ago?
Yeah. That's correct.
So were you able to vote? Were you able to submit your vote?
No.
Okay, so we do have your vote, correct?
Mm-hmm.
What, what I'm asking, I'm sure I can speak for the other 39 homes, did they postpone this till next fiscal year? Is it not like the streets are going to get repaired any time soon?
Did he say for, for my own, because I didn't hear at all.
He, he requested, as part of his comments during the public hearing, the council postpone this assessment to next fiscal year.
Which would be, for the, everybody, be July 1st?
No, he, I believe what he's, and he can certainly, 1919, 1920, yeah. He's asking for a year, wait a year is what he's asking.
But the new...
But, and council, you can certainly consider those requests after the ballots are done, and it comes back to council for a vote on the resolution. This, this is still a public comment.
Can I ask a question, or do I have to wait till it comes back to council?
You may ask a question. This is part of, we're still part of public comment, so I mean, public, the public hearings.
So the new, the new tax roll, or the new rolls come out July 1st, the county assessor, if, did I misunderstand, or is that a correct statement? Where the new owners, they get all reported back to, and they report it out July 1st?
I believe it'll actually go on the assessment starting January.
January?
Yes, for next year.
So, no, no, uh...
Of 2019.
Next calendar year.
No, let me rephrase my question. When you guys request notification, maybe I'm misunderstanding, so I just want to clarify, thank you, when you guys request, who owns the properties?
Yes, what he, he was getting it from July of this year, 2018, or, sorry, 2017.
2017, that's my, if I may finish my...
So if they moved in in January, or December?
I would like to finish my question, please. Okay? So when you receive the documentation from Kings County, that is based on a July to July, June to July period. So our next new period's coming up, January, unless I'm mistaken, July 1st, 2018, the new roster will come out from the assessor's office.
Is that correct, Jim? Yes.
That's, that was my question. So if, for some reason, if we wanted to postpone, you could post, we, there's, I'll leave it at that, I'm going to, that's, that was my question. When does a new roster come out? It's not July, January, it's July the 1st, 2018, and then everybody comes in, buys new homes, the next roster will come out July 1st, 2019.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I just also would like to point out that we bring the LLMD and PFMD assessments every year to council around May and June, and we need to have that into the assessor by like August 10th for next year, just as a side note. So what, once the, if these are passing or not passing, that'll go into our annual assessment for this next year.
So what you're saying is you need to have it into the assessor, just for clarification, thank you, is that by August 10th, so it can be put on next year's tax rolls?
Correct.
Thank you.
That's good.
How long does it take to process? How long does it take to, apologize for all the questions, but how long does it take to process? Say, say if it was passed at a later date, how many days do you need, do you need to get it to the assessor? Is it like two weeks, one week, average?
You may, you may have to correct me if I'm wrong, but it would go on the next annual assessment. So if we don't do it this, with this assessment for next year, it won't go on until the following year.
Okay, thank you.
Is that correct?
To answer your question, whatever your last council meeting is, but by, before August 10th, it would have to be approved at that point in time in order for us to get on the tax rule. Basically, it'll take us a week, a week and a half to actually generate the tax bills, or generate the file to go to the county.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other public comment? No?
Thank you.
Okay, closed the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion. So are we satisfied that we followed the legal procedure to notify all the property owners here, and we even went above and beyond that by sending out supplemental votes afterwards? So I'm still wondering how come, as the lady stated, that so many people didn't receive their, their ballot?
Well, it's a fairly new development, so you have a lot of new ownership, but county records don't keep up with that.
Yeah, there are some assessments that D.R. Horton said... Horton said they did not own, and when I looked it up on the assessor's website, it showed that D.R. Horton owned it.
So, this here says eight still shows D.R. Horton, nine sold end of March. Is that what we're talking about over here?
The yellow is what D.R. Horton said is sold, and red is what they say they have not sold. But several of the ones that D.R. Horton said were sold, still showed D.R. Horton for the assessment.
They still show, and there's people in there. There should be some...
Yes. I don't know how long it takes the assessor to process that information. Up to six months is what Jim says.
So, what would be the burden to the city if we postponed for a year?
The burden to the city would be, you will have people living in homes, and you will not be collecting a tax roll. And if the vote goes at a later date and does not pass, because I don't know if it passed or failed, we need to get to that point yet. But, say it passes tonight, and the council chooses to postpone, you can't guarantee the outcome the next go-around. If it fails a vote, the city's gonna eat this district, which we're experiencing in all our LLMDs right now. That's the risk.
Do you have another comment, sir?
The general fund would pay.
Oh, yeah.
You also have a developer agreement, that he's, he's met his obligation by participating in the protest ballot proceeding and, and processing the annexation to this development into the district, and you can't just ignore that as well.
Good, thank you. So, then, if this doesn't pass, then we will be, the general fund will be responsible, and we know where that is.
Can be.
Okay, so should we take a vote? Or should we see the results of the vote? Do you guys want, is there any other questions?
See what the vote was like.
I have a comment after the, we see the vote.
Okay, Ms. Blair has a comment.
After the vote, I'll wait till, do we comment now, or do we talk to the vote?
They're gonna have to count the vote.
Counsel, they have to count the vote, and so it may take a few minutes, if you want to make your comments while they're counting the vote, which they are currently doing.
Sure, I, I, I can't thank the citizens enough for coming. These are comments that I hear all the time, and it's hard to bring people to council chambers because they're working, or they have families in there, have little kids at home, or things like that. And even though we've met our obligations with the developer, it's more than apparent that there's a concern by the residents that live there, that not everybody has had to acquit notice. And if it's the case that we have to risk, you know, we need these numbers before August, then I'd say that gives us a pretty good incentive to go knock on doors and make sure that we get good ballot returns the second go-around, because I cannot see continuing when there, it's very clear that there's concerns by those residents specifically, that their taxes are going up. And I have to say, I can understand why they might be a little concerned if things aren't even straight to start with, if, if we're only doing things kind of halfway in some areas, I would be concerned we're doing it in halfway in other areas, too. I'm not saying we are or not, I could see what their concern come from, comes from, though. I can understand that. And so, I, I'm waiting to see how the ballot returns go, but I, there's a lot of questions here.
I have a question, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I have a question, before that, that is, we're notified of, of those returns. Say, I have a hypothetical situat- question, and I don't know if, shut me off if I go too far. Say, if, if for some reason, this is taped, okay? And we go out and try to reach out to the other people that, that is in that area. Does everybody in that area get the revote? Or is it just the new people? Can we have that supplement? Because we sent out the supplement vote, we sent out the supplement card. What I'm trying to get at is, 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 this would be another supplement per se. Is it, is it a vote that everybody gets a new ballot? Or is it something that, the people who are, you know, after the rolls are double-checked, those people who own those homes per the Kings County, are those people who did not receive a ballot? Can they obtain a ballot, vote, add it to that pile, and then come out with a conclusion?
I, I, I would have to check, Councilman, Member Brown, but I don't believe so, I think you'd have to do a new vote. The other thing is that there may be some issues with timing. If you can't, you can't wait till July to send, that there's certain notice requirements in addition to the forty-five days, you have to make sure they're property owners, et cetera. It, that would be complicated, I think Jim can, if he can add to that, but I think there are some complications in just adding to your votes.
Yes, you could abandon tonight's vote, whatever the outcome may be, and go back out to the, do the process over again. But the truth is, there's no guarantee that we're gonna capture all the new owners anyhow. I mean, every time, anytime you do a balloting like this, there are those people that are not going to receive ballots. They're undeliverable, they come back to the city as undeliverable. They, you know, they're, because the address information is wrong, there are people that move into homes all the time. I just completed a balloting in, in the city of Poway that involved 5,000 property owners. I'll guarantee you, there was at least 100 people that were new to that that never got a ballot. I mean, it's just, it is what it is, you can only do what you can do.
I fully understand it, but my question was, is, is, is it would not be a supplement to what we have existing, it would have to be a new ballot?
It would have, you'd have to actually start the process over again.
Okay, that was, that was, so there, okay, that was my...
Would the, would the same engineer's report be able to be used, or would we have to get a new engineer's report?
Well, theoretically, it hasn't changed, I mean, I can, I would have to, I have to do a little bit of research and obviously come up, but the only thing that's really gonna change is who we'd mail the ballots to, because the numbers don't change. The improvements aren't changing, so the engineer's report is solid, it's just a question of, you know, looking at who, who the new property owners may be, and researching that. So, you ready for the ballot outcome?
Sure.
The ballot results are $41,920 yes, $3,275 no. And we have the one written protest that can actually be counted as a valid ballot, because it wasn't issued by the city, but they, they, they created their own ballot and voted no. But it would go down as a written protest as far as comments or concerns not actually counted in the ballot count.
If I may ask another question?
Yes, sir.
Say, if, if, if it wasn't accepted, the people who are, well, if it wasn't accepted, that means that we're not gonna, we're not gonna combine the two into one zone, also, is that a correct statement?
I can't do that. From a benefits, this is an assessment district, and I have to identify and look at general and special benefits.
That wasn't my question.
The benefit is shared, I can't, I can't ignore the fact that both...
No, I understand that, I understand, I'm not asking you to. So, my question is, is, is say, because the people that's already, that was there in the very first phase of the subdivision was part of a PFMD?
No, the, yeah, yes, they're already part of the PFMD.
They're already a, are part of PFMD. Now, the, 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 the second phase of the subdivision is still applicable, or still, is still required to be part of that first PFMD vote?
No.
No, okay, so what would happen?
What would hap- not to override you here, but what will happen is, the phase one that are existing, they're gonna get levied the $564 this year. The new subdivision, the D.R. Horton, will pay nothing.
Okay, that's what I, that's, thank you, that's, that's what I, right, I got it.
Because their assessment, all this is, this is an increase to the existing development, but it's a new assessment to the D.R.
And it brings everybody in.
I have a question, then.
Yes.
If it was postponed, and the second phase had a revote sometime before August, or whatever, then the tax would not necessarily be levied directly to the phase one, then there would still be time for phase two to be added into the PFMD, correct? If it's done before April 10th, or I mean, sorry, August 10th?
Long as we could do it, but we're running out of time to get it before August 10th, I mean...
I, I don't know if you have enough ti- we'd have to calculate it, I don't know if you have enough time to start the process over before, and have it pass it. Well, forty-five days for the ballot, but you'd have to have some resolutions before that.
But you have to have a resolution, so we have to go to another council meeting, and then I need a week or so to get the ballots out after that, so we're talking three weeks before ballots would go out again, we're gonna run out of time.
You'll run out of time.
Well, we have emergency council meetings.
You cannot do this on emergency.
Yeah, nice, it's good, it's good. Yeah, it still has to be, the forty-five days still has to be there, so...
And some of these things have to create a regular council meeting.
But like I said, ultimately, if you don't approve this tonight, the existing zone four would get assessed this year, the $564 that they were already approved at for their maximum assessment, and the new annexation area would not get assessed at all, until we could go back out to ballot and do this all over again. But, I'll be real frank with you here.
Please.
The, the developer owns 51 properties, plus some of the properties in the existing development. If he votes yes, it's gonna pass no matter what.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask you, even with the ones that are contested, it's, it's...
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's reality.
It's a moot point.
I mean, it's not, not what you want to have happen, but it is, it is the way it is, I mean...
Well, I appreciate you answering the question, because the thing, I know they're hard que- you know, and, and, you know, nobody likes, I don't like taxes myself, or fees, you know, but I do...
And developers don't like them either, but it's a part of doing business.
But I, but I do, I do appreciate you answering my question.
And really, the truth is, if you look at the budget, a large portion of that budget is going to future road maintenance. Road maintenance costs, as you well know, it costs a lot of money.
It's very expensive.
And that's what, that's where the lion's share of this cost is at.
Right. For the CIP.
Before we vote, I, I just wanted to say something that...
So, let's close the public hearing. Did I close it already? Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to make my comment now.
Yeah.
That the idea that the developer is going to stomp whatever the other homeowners in the area wish, is sort of part of the problem, or at least, that's what I'm hearing from homeowners, that even in the end, it's still going to be, I get it, the developer has more of the properties, but I'm not here to represent the developer, just solely them, I mean, I'm glad when they come to our city, but I'm here to represent the community, and they're telling us they have concerns, and I don't care if they only vote it worth 3,000 votes instead of the 450,000 votes, they live there, they have concerns, I'm listening to those concerns, and I think they're valid, we should, if, if we really care, then let's hurry it up and go back to ballot then, because even if, like you said, it's still gonna turn out that the developer is going to have more votes, well, at least we were listening and representing the community that came and spoke to us.
Yeah, I lived in the rural of 1990, and I was in for the same exact thing, because a lot of people that lived there, they even informed about the taxes attached to the city. And there was one street, I believe it was one street or two streets, but there were 200 homes in that area, and only like 30 of them got ballots and votes, the rest of them basically, to the developer, just like what's happening here, so this ain't the first time.
Sir, I'm gonna have to stop you, the public hearing's done, sorry. So, we're discussing now. Any other discussion?
I almost find it, I mean, I, I hate to, you know, see these kind of fees for the, the citizens that are showing concern, but there's a, there's a point to where to do this over, and the time that it takes, and the burden to our general fund right now is not good timing, so I think we as a council need to be responsible to look at the long-range effects it'll have by pushing this. This is, this is something that doing over, I hate to say it, I don't think it's gonna do any, do any good if we push it, if there'll be any different result. And, and I, I feel ya, I totally feel ya, but this is something that might just not be worth pushing to another time and have the same discussion, so I...
I, I honestly, I have nothing.
Mr. Neil?
This is a tough one right here, got us in a corner. I'm here to serve the people, I'm, like I said before, this is a tough one. When it comes to certain things like this, if they wasn't properly informed on it, I'm gonna lean towards the people, so that's where I'm going with that.
I'd like to make one other comment, and this is not to chastise any of the councilmembers, but the idea that it's not worth it, it can be perceived as, to those families it is, to those families, it's very much worth it, they, they have families that they have to feed to. And if nothing else, it'll make sure the second time, and this happens again, that it's done right, and every time it's done right, that will keep us on our toes for sure. I know that would have the added benefit of that, so we wouldn't be back in here every single time this happens, that we have a development, so...
I have a comment. I, I think that, I, I, I think that the contractor that we had on record to do this, did their due diligence, I think they did. They even sent out a second ballot. The thing is, is there's probably many different factors that's involved, we, I don't know, I don't know what all those factors are. You know, like somebody said, you know, it could be people moving, mail gets forwarded, whatever, you know? So, I just wanna, you know, say that I personally don't think that there was any, you know, I think you guys did your due diligence, you guys did, did what you were supposed to do. You know, that's all I have to say.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve item 4-2, and approve resolution 2018-22 as proposed.
Motion by Mr. Chetister, is there a second?
Second.
And a second by Mr. Brown. Mr. Chetister?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
No.
Mr. Neil?
No.
That's why they leave it up to me. Well, I think, I appreciate you all being here, and talking to us, and bringing up your concerns, but I will tell you, this is an issue that is not only here in your area. We're struggling very, very mightily with our general fund and being able to maintain these areas, and this is why we do it. It sounds like, based on all the information that we have, the best information we possibly have, is that if we were to go do another ballot, the outcome would not change. All it would do is delay the process, and not allow us to get this thing moving, so I'm gonna vote yes. Thank you. Okay, so we will go to item 4-4, which is resolution 2018-24, Landscape and Lighting Maintenance District, number one, zone 05, ordering increase of assessment of annual levy for fiscal year 1819.
Good evening again. This district is this little bitty one right here, south of Cinnamon, right by the old fire department. Now, first of all, there is a correction to be made in the resolution, two corrections actually. On the first page, right after the first whereas, it says "he," and it should be "the." And then, in the therefore section, section three, it's listing district zone number one, and it should be five, zone number five. City clerk is aware of these changes, she's made the changes to the resolution that would be signed.
So, for 4-4, it's zone five, is that correct?
Yes, correct. Now, this is an LLMD, so it's a landscape and lighting maintenance district, so this will only service like landscaping, irrigation, anything to the entrance to the subdivision. This will not do any of the roads, so of course, this assessment is less. I would also like to comment, you know, when we're talking about the money, these are the maximum assessments, so that doesn't necessarily mean that they're gonna be assessed at full amount, it may be less, just so we kinda keep that in mind. The current assessment for LLMD zone five is $62.32 a year. This assessment was started in 1997, and has never been increased. The proposed assessment is $133 a year, which would be an increase of $70.68 a year, which breaks out to $5.89 a month. The current budget in this zone is $1,935.28. cents. With the increase, the proposed budget would be three thousand nine hundred and eighty-three dollars and eighty-four cents, and that's annually for one year. Let's see, this, the LLMDs would have a three percent inflator, so that means every year that maximum assessment can go up three percent, and it would go up three percent every year. And again, what they would be assessed wouldn't necessarily be what that maximum assessment number is. And on the LLMDs, we have had some neighborhood meetings to try to reach out to people to, so they can understand what's going on, or if they had any questions, we did have one meeting with Zone Five.
Any questions?
I have a question about the inflator, since it's a slightly different inflator for the LLMDs, is there any way to cap, is it capped at a certain point, for example, if, we have a three percent inflator, but let's say for five continuous years, we only raise it by one percent instead of the three, for example, and, and every year though, we could potentially grow that higher, it could, I could see how a citizen could be used to this certain inflator, and then all of a sudden it spikes, 'cause some big thing happens or whatever, is there, do, do we cap it at like ten years or five years, is there a way to gauge, if it went twenty-five years at only one percent, and then one year it like jumped because it had all this ability to jump, which each, with each, rise each year?
I don't know if you wanna answer that, I assume it has to stay at the three percent, I don't know who would track when to, when it would change.
Yes, future councils have the ability to suspend the maximum increase in any given year, if you so desire, but the reality is, inflation is running close to three percent, it's actually over three percent this year, it's been under for several years, but it's back over three percent, so really, three percent is gonna probably just keep you right in the ballpark.
I understand that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Nope, all right, we'll open the public hearing.
Counsel, before, I, I'm sorry to interrupt, before we go to the public hearing on this matter, I need to advise counsel that the previous resolution did not pass. It's required to have a two-thirds vote for a Prop. Two-eighteen resolution to pass, there was a three-two vote, and a two-thirds vote of, not anymore, has that been changed?
It's a simple majority of the council, because it's a seventy-two act, that's not a concrete issue.
I will, okay, I will double check, counsel, but we will need to check that.
If the property owners that decide, council can do an act.
It's, it's the resolution I'm concerned about, I will check, counsel. Thank you.
Okay, the vote is what it is.
The vote is what it is.
All right, so you will advise us as far as whether or not it was requiring a two-thirds or not, okay. So let's go back to the one we were talking about, four-dash-four, is there any, you had a question, Mr. Neal?
Yeah, since nineteen ninety-seven, it's been sixty-two, thirty-two?
That's correct.
And you guys proposed for one-thirty-three?
Correct.
Is it, why is this a tremendous?
Well, it's based on the amount of work that needs to be done, I, I didn't, I mean, you calculated the...
He's getting exercise.
As we indicated in the other district, the costs are calculated based on a cost per square foot, I mean, actually, if you took the sixty-two dollars back in nineteen ninety-seven and inflated it three percent every year, you'd be right at a hundred and thirty-three dollars, probably pretty close, I mean, so, I mean, it's, the numbers are fairly well in line, I mean, I don't know how exactly, but the numbers are calculated on what you guys, what it's costing you as a city for water, contract services, your city services, whatever needs to be done in terms of maintenance, it's, it's consistent with that across the board in all the districts.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, so I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Any comment? Closed public hearing. So we did go out to, and made some presentations, correct?
Yes.
So what kind of, what kind of response did we get from people, as far as public participate?
Do you wanna know?
Was that one of the ones that you were at?
That was Zone One.
Zone One, okay.
I, do you wanna know specifically for this zone?
Well, just, how many people showed up?
For this zone, no one did.
Is that Zone Five?
Zone Five, and then one gentleman walked down to talk to us, 'cause we were standing there, but that was about it, this one, we didn't have very many people.
Okay. All right, so can we...
And these were well advertised, I mean, I seen the...
Advertised, the signage was out for several days prior to the, to the meeting.
I guess we'll just wait for the vote.
I'd like to mention that it seems to be a reoccurring theme, that the community members aren't coming out, or seem to appear to not have noticed, or, not that we're not sending, but however they're receiving it, they're not, they're not checking their mailbox, or they're not seeing those signs, I think maybe we might start one of, or we want, might wanna think about other ways of communicating these meetings, because this way that we're doing now isn't working. I mean, we're putting in a lot of effort, and, and it's, it's routine, that we're not getting a lot of people to come back in, so is there a way that we might be able to advertise in another way?
I would say short of knocking on every individual door and trying to make contact that way, I mean, it was, the, the sign was put right outside their entrance to their home for a week, so unless they can't read, I would've said they would've got that notice, it was on our Facebook page, it went out in the mail.
Went in the water bill, did it not?
Yes.
I've never seen it.
I mean, so I just...
Maybe it was a meeting time, maybe it's not a good time for people, maybe they're hearing about it, but they can't come, I'm just saying, there's nobody coming, so that's a, a sign that something's wrong.
Well, that was just this one zone, it's a very small zone, now Zone One had a lot of people show for the first meeting and the second meeting, so...
I think the good thing is they get to voice their opinion in these votes, they don't have to be here, they just mailed them in.
And I, we actually did have people just call in too and ask questions via the phone.
Okay, and this, um, the yes votes were a hundred and thirty-three dollars, the no vote was nine hundred and thirty-one dollars, so you have a majority protest, the increase cannot go into effect.
Okay, so we don't have to vote on it?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. So they did get the notice, it sounds like.
Yep.
All right, so let's go to item four-dash-three, are we ready for that? So this one is resolution twenty-eighteen twenty-three, Landscape and Lighting Maintenance District Number One, Zone Zero One, ordering increase of assessment of annual levy for fiscal year eighteen-nineteen. Ms. Byers-Gore, again.
Hey, this one is another LLMD, which again is just landscaping and irrigation, and this is the large zone right here, it's east of Liberty, south of Hanford-Armona Road, west of Lemoore Avenue, and north of Cinnamon Drive. For this one, we had two neighborhood meetings at six-thirty, and they were pretty well attended, thank you, thank you for the word. The current assessment in Zone One, oh, sorry, the resolution twenty-eighteen dash twenty-three also has one correction, whereas it says key city, it should be the city. The current assessment in this district is a hundred and thirty-five dollars a year, and this assessment was last increased in two thousand and four. The proposed assessment is two hundred and nine dollars a year, which would be an increase of seventy-four dollars a year, which is six dollars and seventeen cents a month. The current budget is seventy-six thousand four hundred and ten dollars, and the proposed budget is one hundred and seventeen thousand seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixty cents. I did a calculation over the last, like, seventeen years, and on average, there's been eighty-eight thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars spent out of this zone, with their budget being seventy-six thousand dollars. This too would also have a three percent inflator, and this, this zone has five hundred and sixty-six parcels.
How many parcels did you say?
Five hundred and sixty-six that are assessed.
Thank you.
This is the, the first zone ever created in Lemoore, and it's the largest.
Questions?
And it's, just, just for the record again, it's, it's going to, it's existing costing is...
The existing budget?
The existing cost per homeowner.
Sorry, a hundred and thirty-five dollars.
One thirty-five, and it's gonna raise to?
It's gonna go up to...
Two oh nine?
Two oh nine, a year.
Seventy-four dollars. Any questions? Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing, is there anyone that would like to comment on this matter during public hearing?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council, that's a fifty-four point eight percent increase from the one thirty-five to the two oh nine. I know there was a meeting at Lyons Park, and there was a discussion or a statement made that the fund was running in a negative for the past several years, to me, that would mean poor management, for this to be happening every year. Your, the letter that came with the ballot states in the section here, under how the assessment was calculated, it says, printed from here, every year, the city estimates the cost to maintain and service. If it was done every year, why are we increasing it such a significant amount? If we did, much like Zone Five, increased it three percent every year from two thousand and four, we would be at this point today. Why it wasn't done for the last fourteen years is a good question. Poor management and the engineer's report, I would say, is also in fault, that should not happen. Now, I realize probably none of you were here back in two thousand and four, you wouldn't be on the council, but nevertheless, should the members of the citizens in the community bear that brunt because of that error? The increase, if it's for new equipment, I'm gonna say, why do we need new equipment? The drought that occurred several years ago, the medians still are under that drought restriction, so we're not watering any of those, drive around town in that zone, the, the grass is dead, and the trees are dying, why would you need any new equipment? You're not maintaining anything. Now, if you're gonna buy materials to put rock where the grass was, that might cost a little bit, but after that's done, there'll be very little maintenance required, so why do we need such a big increase? Lastly, if it's to supplement the salary increases, and the other thing that I know is an issue, is to cowpurs, if this is to fund that, that is not the appropriate way. Thank you.
Thank you. There any other comments? Okay, seeing that, we'll close this public hearing, bring it back to council.
Well, it's been fourteen years, and there hasn't been an increase, am I right?
That's correct.
Since two thousand and four, so that, yeah, the error is that there was no three percent increase over the years, well, I think what we're trying to do is, we're trying to get back in check and do it right, and have the inflation start now, so another fourteen years from now, we're not having the, the discussion, it's kind of built in, so it, it's a hard one to swallow, but I, we are trying to get back on track and probably do what should've been done fourteen years ago, that's, that's my opinion.
I agree, it's, it's a legacy issue, we have to fix it, unfortunately, we have to do it like this, but...
I would like to ask a question, if any?
Go ahead.
Oh, wait, are you...
Ask who a question?
The council, but are you done? I didn't wanna interrupt you.
Yeah, I'm done, go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't wanna interrupt you, so...
No, that's fine.
Just real quick, if, is there a way to increase the, the amount, let's say, over three years, because it's such a drastic jump, fifty-four percent, is there a way to increase, say, you know, twenty percent, twenty percent, twenty percent, and then that way, we, we do hit our mark, but we stretch it out a few years, so that it's not such a burden for those homeowners for what has gone on over the last fourteen years?
I'll be happy to answer that one. In terms of the balloting, that's very difficult to do, I mean, you start giving, you know, stair stepping assessments, people don't understand that, and it gets real confusing, so the ballot process that we went through set the maximum. You can certainly go from the one thirty-five to the two oh nine gradually over the next ten years if you want, however, the budget's designed to maintain the improvements at an appropriate level of maintenance. Stair stepping it just means you're not bringing it up to the level of maintenance you want right away, it's gonna just, and property owners may get upset if they, assuming they approve this, if they don't see something change, they're gonna be upset that they paid all that money and didn't see anything change, so it's kind of a double-edged sword that you have to, you know, work through, but certainly, part of the money's being collected towards long-term replacements, we could delay those, if that's the council's desire, and just assess for actual maintenance costs for the first couple of years, and then gradually build it up from there, but it's delaying money that you're gonna need fairly soon, 'cause the unfortunate thing is, because these things have been underfunded for fourteen years, the maintenance is not where it should be, and it's gonna take a significant amount of money soon to get them back up to where they should be, so that's part of the cost, and maybe replacing the dead land, uh, dead turf in the medians with rocks is a great idea, maybe that's what we do with the money, instead of spending it on water, we can massage the budget, but I can guarantee you the price of what, whatever we do, whether it's maintenance or refurbishment, it's gonna take all of that two hundred and nine dollars to do that.
I appreciate all of your added opinion there, but the answer was yes, we could if we wanted to, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And just, so council realizes, Mr. ...
McGuire.
Mr. McGuire, sorry, excuse me, is going to set up to count the votes by machine, I believe, is that correct?
We'll be waiting for a while?
We'll be waiting.
We'll be waiting.
You can ask a question.
Okay.
Do you need it, Mr. McGuire, or just in general?
Just in general.
Okay, so if you wanna, go ahead.
That gentleman, he said something that made sense, why did it take us so long? If we would've built year to year, it could've been, like I said, I don't know, we're gonna say, poor maintenance, or poor ma, uh, management on this, but year to year, we'd been a lot better than just waiting for years to accumulate, accumulate, and then boom, and that's why I think that the people are concerned about why the drastic jump. So you did make sense to me what you were saying, that it's like we dragged our feet into, well, we weren't here like in two thousand and four, so it wasn't us, that's all I wanted to say.
Councilmember Neal, we did levy this area in the years past and had failed votes, and I'll be the first one to admit that when these zones were created, they're lighting, landscape, maintenance, maintenance districts, it was mostly just landscape, they didn't include the lights, which they could have, they didn't do any inflators, if these were set up properly from day one, we wouldn't even be here right now, so we, we are absolutely playing catch-up, absolutely.
Was that, was that, excuse me, was that with the LMMD, or was that with the PFMD?
So PFMDs are solid, the PFMDs don't have the issues, the LLMDs do, the LLMDs are, are a chronic issue for the city, as you all have known for, for quite some time.
So we're gonna, we're gonna try to go back, or we're gonna try to stay with the PM, the PFMDs then?
Any, any new developments, yes, normally we'll have a PFMD, with the exception, if, if you have a new development going in that's already an LLMD, and they're sharing that district, then we would incorporate it into the LLMD, and then we would add the inflator and try to add some lights to it, so it, we kinda catch up that way, but yeah, all the new, new subdivisions will be PFMDs. So it, we kinda catch up that way, but yeah, all the new, new subdivisions will be PFMDs.
Okay, good, thank you.
Counsel, I've had the opportunity to review it, the motion did pass.
It just requires a simple majority?
It did?
Yeah, it just requires a simple majority.
Can I ask a question while we're waiting then? The idea that it may not pass again, because apparently, we've tried in the past to add a little bit, and it hasn't passed. I might make the suggestion, I don't know what the answer's gonna be, if it passes or not, but if it does not in fact pass again, perhaps adding it gradually and explaining that to homeowners might make it more likely for them to vote yes, because part of the reason for no might be that knee jerk reaction of the fifty-four percent jump. So I might suggest, if it doesn't pass, we do try to spread that out a little bit for homeowners. It might get a better reception. That's it. Should really get some Jeopardy music.
Anybody got a song they wanna sing or anything?
And the only way to...
Chelsea?
To do any, anything else with this, is to actually pull it out of our general fund. So, we have a, if, if, if whatever our, our costing is, is X, and we, you know, you're trying to do modifications or do replacement, infrastructure, repair, and if it exceeds what we have coming in, the only other option is, is to not do it or pull it out of our general fund, which we're gonna end up not using in other parts of our city.
Or if it doesn't pass, we just maintain to the amount that we can collect.
Right. And that's too, what we need, you know, is like, you know, make sure the, the public understands that too. Yeah.
It's been the quietest part of my day. Yeah, he's got a ballot counter for this one, there's a lot of ballots.
And I have five kids, this is a vacation for me, when it's quiet, which is fine.
Got excited, I thought he was the tally person. Wonder if I just stopped the live recording? What do you think? Leave it go, we're just sitting here. So if, if the zone has the money, then we pay it out of the zone. Unfortunately, all these underfunded zones, it came out of the, it came from the general fund.
So we, we would burn that cost, and the general funds were in that cost, and that expected cost. Do we do this all over again?
Yes.
With the engineers' fees, attorney's fees, the part?
Yes.
Ultimately, if the voters vote no, then we'd still have to do it again, because if they vote no, we're still back at, stuck at the starting point of not having it addressed, right? So, if we continuously get no ballots, we might wanna rethink how we're addressing the situation, because we're still back at zero.
I think it's been ten plus years since we balloted the... I think it's been ten plus years since we went after this one. Yeah.
Take a five minute break, baby.
Take a ten minute break.
Tell it to you, five minute, ten minute break, baby.
We'll take a ten minute break.
All right. You went to the back, and you put us on break. We're done? Shut this off.